The Holy Gospel of our Lord Jesus Christ, according to John.
Glory to you, Lord Christ.
On the next day, when the people who remained after the feeding of the 5,000 saw that neither Jesus nor his disciples were there, they themselves got into the boats and went to Capernaum, looking for Jesus. When they found him on the other side of the sea, they said to him, "Rabbi, when did you come here?" Jesus answered them, "Very truly, I tell you, you are looking for me not because you saw signs, but because you ate your fill of the loaves. Do not work for the food that perishes, but for the food that endures for eternal life, which the Son of Man will give you. For it is on him that God the Father has set his seal." Then they said to him, "What must we do to perform the works of God?" And Jesus answered them, "This is the work of God, that you believe in him whom he has sent." So they said to him, "What sign are you going to give us then, so that we may see it and believe you? What work are you performing?" Our ancestors ate the manna in the wilderness, as it is written; he gave them bread from heaven to eat. Then Jesus said to them, "Very truly, I tell you, it was not Moses who gave you the bread from heaven, but it was my Father who gives you the true bread from heaven. For the bread of God is that which comes down from heaven and gives life to the world." They said to him, "Sir, give us this bread always." Jesus said to them, "I am the bread of life. Whoever comes to me will never hunger, and whoever believes in me will never be thirsty." The Gospel of the Lord.
The praise to you, Lord Christ.
Please be seated. I now call this meeting to order, and I will yield to the gentle lady from down the street, our senior warden, Connie Lightbody, for the election of alternate delegates.
Good morning. It's nice to say that we are now back worshiping in our church and not just seeing us each other virtually. We've had a long, long time before this came about, and it's really nice to see all of you here. And we're getting back to more business as we usually do. We have convention coming up, a diocesan convention in October, and we have four delegates, and we always elect two alternates in case one of them can't participate and vote, but also because then they go that first year, and it basically is a three-year commitment to there are going to be an alternate the first year and delegates the next two years. We have two candidates that have been agreed to be nominated, Karen Shostrom and Debbie Baxter. Is there anyone, are there any nominations? Okay, then I will, let's vote by acclamation, all in favor of Debbie and Karen. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. It's good, it's good to be back doing real, real-life in-person work.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn this portion of the, this formal part of the meeting? Okay, I heard Carolyn, is there a second? I see Cheryl, second. All those in favor? I. Opposed? Very good. I would ask if Jerry Michelson could come up and begin with a report on where we are financially.
Okay, good morning, everyone. I'm going to kind of, kind of break this out to a couple of sections. One, I'll talk first about the parish, and then, secondly, just a little highlight of the preschool. I think most of the preschool will be discussed later by Alicia. So, looking at the financial outlook, I guess I'd say, all in all, our parish is doing quite well, which is really wonderful, given the pandemic situation. This year, we are halfway through the year at this point, and we are operating with a $39,000 surplus, which is really, really wonderful. But it's not totally rosy. Things never are that black and white, I guess. June's receipts, the pledge receipts this month, were significantly below our budgeted running rate. I'm not terribly worried about that, because it seems like pledged receipts have been very erratic this year. Some months, they're really, really good, other months, they're really, really bad. This just happened to be a bad month. The expenses continue to be below our budget. That's been wonderful, been a big help. I think primarily the expenses are down because we've held off hiring a Christian education director and a music director slash organist. And so those have been significant cost elements that we haven't had to pay. Also, I think Marcia's done a wonderful job keeping the general office supplies in check, since we're running significantly below budget on that area as well. Then I'd like to go to the preschool. The preschool ended the fiscal year. They operate on a fiscal year, so it goes from July 1st through June 30th. And so they ended this fiscal year with only a $1,200 deficit. And I think that was awfully, awfully good, considering the fact that they only operated this year with about half the students. Because of the COVID fears, the youngest little toddlers, there were no programs for them. Next year, we look forward to re-welcoming those young toddlers, and we do have extra openings, so if you know of anyone who might be interested, please, please help. Lastly, I'd like to just mention a little bit about our cash balances, because I think that's really important to know, too. If you don't, if you have a special project, like the landscaping that we needed to work on, or other unforeseen events come up, like the big maintenance, this project that we had to do around in front of the attain building, we can draw from these cash reserves. At the end of June, we had $323,000 in cash in our bank account at Wells Fargo. This is significantly more than we need to operate from day to day, and just sitting in a bank account, as you all know, you don't get any interest anymore. It's just, just woeful. So we, the Finance Committee made a decision that we take $150,000 of that and transfer that money into the Diocesan Investment Fund. We call that the DIF. And hopefully, the returns there, which have been mimicking the stock market returns, and if you've noticed, the stock market's done very, very well, and we hope that that $150,000 will be better, better earning than just keeping it in a bank account. And if we do need it, we can get it back on 30 days' notice. It's not, it's not lost there forever. So it's, it's, it's workable to get it back if that need arises. As of June 30th, we had $797,000 in the DIF already. So if you add another 150, we're coming close to $950,000 with them. That's not necessarily free money. All but $47,000 of that, 797,000, has been allocated for specific purposes, a reserve for specific purposes. And these purposes are generally directed by the people who donated the money to the church, either through their wills or through other giving programs that they've made, and so they've highlighted them for specific instances. So we have to keep that in mind, too. But all in all, very fortunate position. I think it speaks wonderfully to the, I guess, continued conviction that the parish members have given to this church during the past tough 16 months, and I thank you all.
We're just going to open up for any questions that folks have, either from...
Yeah, I have, I have spreadsheets, so if you have questions.
So are there any questions for Jerry, either for you all participating from home or here? Please, Karen and John.
Well, I'd just like to say that the power of the Holy Spirit at work wasn't many years ago when the fear was, boys were going to be sold.
That's true. Four years ago, we were perilously close to shutting down. That's correct. So, and, and the thing that's kind of wonderful about this comeback is that the head count, the parish count, has not grown. So we've done this with the core nucleus of people, and I think that just speaks volumes for that core nucleus.
Thank you, Jerry. Alicia, would you come up, please?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Let me start by saying it's very nice to see your faces. For several months, I saw the back sides of your cutouts, which were very plain. For those of you that don't know, we did open the preschool in October in person. We had about 87 students down from our typical 120. As Jerry mentioned, it was our younger students that the parents were reluctant to send them. All of the students were required to be masked, as well as the staff, and we put additional safety protocols in place. Only one class at a time on the playground with disinfecting in between, removing dress-up, stuffies, baby dolls and dress-up, stuff out of the classroom, unfortunately, that we didn't feel we could disinfect easily. However, we started with little goals. Let's make it to Thanksgiving. Let's make it to Christmas. And we did. We had our first positive case of COVID in April. It was siblings, so it did affect our four-year-old age group and our three-year-old age group. We found out on a Wednesday, the students were not in attendance. We shut down for Friday, Monday, Tuesday, with the weekend that gave us five days. We came in and cleaned the classrooms. We had the students of the classes that were involved tested. We had the staff tested, and happily to say, it didn't spread. So what we were doing in that moment was working. The kids are incredibly amazing about wearing their masks. They're better than adults, I'm coming to find out. So we are going to proceed this year with opening again. We are going to have all of the children masked, as well as the staff. That is something I have felt strongly about, regardless of our circumstances right now with this Delta virus. I felt that the children are not going to be able to be vaccinated. I don't see that age group being able to be vaccinated. So in order to protect them, we were going to have them masked, as well as the staff. So we'll move forward with that. As Jerry mentioned, we are light on our pre-3s and our 3s age groups still at this point in time, and I do believe it's parents' reluctance, and I, I understand that. So, but we are going to move forward. We're doing well with our 3+4s and our pre-K. So we'll come back, and we'll be masked, and we'll hope for a year as good as last year, and hopefully, we can keep this virus at bay. One of the profound things that a parent said to me, which has stuck with me, because regardless, needless to say, the parents that wanted their children here were very happy that our doors were open, and we never considered virtual preschool. That's not what preschool is about. It is that social component. But we received a thank you card from one of our parents that thanked us for being bold enough and brave enough to attempt to open our doors. And so that really meant a lot to myself and the staff to receive that comment. So we're going to be bold enough and brave enough to do it again and open our doors in September and hope we're as successful as we were this year. So thank you.
So Alicia, hold on just one second. Are there any questions for Alicia, either here or at home? Alrighty. You know, Alicia, I wanted to say to you, I want to recognize, you could, you could write a white paper, or a white paper should be written, on leadership and what you've done this year. Holding two very difficult, opposing pieces in tension, taking care of the kids, but also realizing they needed to be here, and I just can't thank you enough. You've done a beautiful job. Thank you, Dennis.
You'll be glad to know I'm approaching without a three-wing binder and a full glass of water. No sooner had Father Michael arrived than we were hit with a pandemic. Of course, none of us knew what that really meant for a while. When the realities and regulations came down, church took a turn for the worse or the better. The building activities settled like a submarine to the bottom. Programs were halted, systems were stopped, utilities were minimized. Our creative congregation cobbled a Zoom broadcast. Who knew about Zoom? Is it one of the opportunities, if not gifts, of, of the COVID experience? A fine second only to Father Michael was Alex Entrickin, who emerged as our videographer, gaffer, engineer, operator. A veritable kid in a candy store, we were gradually able to hold virtual services in a temporary studio right here. Many of us were not happy to be stuck at home and began to become a persistent presence, if not nuisance, in the building. Preschool was out. What a great time for maintenance. Fall leaves were being blown into the street by our landscaper, who promptly quit after juniors suggested they follow the city regulations against that practice. That was followed shortly by housekeeping that was also resistant to fault finding. The accounts payable profited by the change and step up of our congregation to self-maintenance. Dr. Rod and his mower blower became a regular. Diane Perman formed up the lay weeders. The next thing you knew, there was another group, the adorables. This group, headed by Janine Fredlin, took on refinishing the patio doors. That's those doors. Remember, we painted the other ones red on the other side of the building. Recall that the men left the labyrinth door restoration several months earlier, hoping to never see another, another door they liked. It was a daily routine with these women that attracted a happy crew on a regular basis, and soon, the old boys were even helping. These ladies were not to be trifled with. When they were done, they put on a masked ball on the patio, complete with cake and beverage. All this fun and energy seemed to spill into, what next? Suddenly, the patio bench got refinished, and Jani commissioned a cross to be designed, fabricated, and installed behind the memorial fountain. With little in the way of traditional bureaucratic bumbling, it was suddenly installed, and we said, "Well done!" Standing back to admire her project, her eye fell on the rusty nursery door, and before Jack could be declared her uncle, she had it off, sanded and repainted. Meanwhile, in the building, Bishop declared the possibility of limited preschool in Great Hall, which provided a sufficient space for the masked Munchkins to resume their studies. Air quality concerns prompted filtration protocols, and Bruce Pitts moved us to MERV 13 as the air handlers came back to life. Christmas time was abuzz with fence lighting by Father Michael and the preschoolers. A well-lit tree was erected at the fountain, and Rob Entrickin provided nightly recorded musical backdrop, as he continues to do for our services. Mundane maintenance items were addressed. One fortuitous day, there was a power outage, and we all observed the lack of proper egress lighting. All emergency lighting fixtures were replaced with working units. It became apparent that other lighting issues were upon us, not only burned-out bulbs, but enhanced lighting for our broadcast. A scissor lift was rented, and for a week, it went up and down every aisle, visiting every light fixture. We began to feel that the pandemic might show some relief, and a return to normal was a recognized possibility. What had become a temporary studio with numerous tripods and wires strong here and there had to be tidied up. The lift then continued to build the infrastructure to support our streaming broadcast. What was once a folding table up in the balcony became a workstation supporting multiple cameras and integrating the sound system into the broadcast. Bob McConnell did a masterful job of coordinating efforts. John Vicland was our man up in the basket. Doug Pascoe busied himself with woodworking projects while not being a photographer and engineer, and joined me in hand-wringing over it all. Many hours and many people are to be thanked, not the least being the altar guild and the flower ministry, that faithfully went about keeping the sacred space. Our work continues, as our city has not been idle during the pandemic. The urban realities of our condition is upon us as we become an inner-city church. Change dramatically defining our role, to which we will rise and thrive. May it be so.
Thank you so much, Dennis. Bob McConnell.
Dennis covered everything, so I don't think, the, so talking about streaming, I hope most of you have had an opportunity to watch the service at home. And our system is just about complete now. We have a desire to add one more camera in the chapel and in the choir loft, so when the organ and the choir is back, we'll be able to see them on the streaming broadcast. The, when you get a chance to listen to the organ on the stream, you'll find that it's super. Both, I mean, the organ will be wonderful, and the microphones are wonderful. We're about to start on the next project, which is planning for what we call hybrid meetings, where some people are here and some people are at home. And we haven't decided which conference room to, to proceed with, and we're happy to have inputs on, on which conference room you would like to see equipped to, to do a hybrid meeting. Thankfully, our internet system at the church is completely adequate, no problems at all, and that's mostly thanks to Dennis, who upgraded our, I helped a little bit, but it was Dennis that drove the project to, to add the, make the phone system and internet better. And continuing on that vein, Dennis is really why there's no wires hanging from the light fixtures and, and no microphones hanging down on cables. This is all some help, some planning from myself, help from Alex, and, and a great deal of help from Dennis, from Dennis. So another... Alex, Alex Entrickin is up at the, at the video desk, up in the choir loft. I fear it's a bit warmer up there than it is down here. We, we targeted having a high-quality streaming setup. We started with an iPhone and, and quickly decided that wasn't good enough, and we watched the service at St. Mark's and said, "We will be super if we can do half as good as St. Mark's," and I think we've made it. I would encourage you to watch a service from St. Mark's. They have a guy from King 5 that does the work. There's, so one, one situation is that Father Michael and the festry have agreed that we're going to do the streaming going forward. Not pandemic or not, there will be a stream from St., from St. John's. There's a couple short-term issues. We need a little more help. Alex might like to take a weekend off someday in the future, and he might get sick. We hope not, but he might. So we need, we need to train some people so that we can run the, the service stream without, without Alex. And we, we need to give him some help every Sunday by managing the sound, and so I'm, will be reactivating the sound team, and we'll be there to help Alex with the sound every week. There's, the long-term issues are more like, why are we doing this? And our plan, we, we figured out what to call it. It's a digital evangelism. And that's about how much we know at the moment. We have a name. We need a committee. We need people that are interested in making the, the stream a major way that St. John's does outreach. So we, we have many other ways we do outreach, but to reach the people that need to be reached and to bring them into the St. John's fold, we need to manage this stream and make it useful. And so, please, volunteer. Don't make me come and grab you. It's much more fun to have people that really want to do it. We need, and we need a couple more people that want to work in the sound and video area and, and to back up Alex. I think Dennis and I will do that, but we'd like to not be the only ones. So I think that's it.
Do you need any AV experience to help out with that? Are you willing to train from zero? If you'd please repeat the question first.
I, I think zero is where we expect most everybody to be. Oh, I'm sorry. The question was, do you need any audiovisual experience to volunteer and become part of the team? And I, I'm saying it, you know, most of us that didn't have any to start with. And so we, no, we'll start from the beginning.
One more item that didn't make the agenda. Again, we're looking for volunteers in some, in many ways. We have an annual campaign for pledges coming up. It will, we'll start in, most likely in October. We're looking for people, well, first, yes, Jerry reports, we've got a pretty good size... Well, first, yes, Jerry reports we've got a pretty good sizable amount in our accounts, but as he also reported, there are some expenses that we haven't been paying as we've gone along because we haven't had, for example, an organist for quite a period of time. And these are people that we want to be hiring back, and we're going to need to pay for them. Also, we're looking at what... and Father Michael's going to be talking about this. Where is God leading us? What's our mission? And/or how are we going to reach out and do our mission? And those things do take money to fund. We do have a parishioner who has given, pledged anonymously $50,000 to match new pledges and pledges that are increased for this coming year. So, we're really looking to get out there and have a good annual pledge campaign. A lot of us have been in charge of the pledge annual campaign. We're looking for somebody who'd head it up, but we're also looking for people just to help on the campaign. So, please, we have some trainings coming up. The diocese has several trainings coming up in September and October, and so we want to get these people in place to get started and be part of those trainings as they come up. Father Michael, it's yours.
Thank you so much, Connie. So, I'm going to do a couple of things. I'm going to really be happy when we can put these away. So, I'm going to report on some things, as in the same vein that our trusted servants here have just done. And then I'm going to talk about what the vestry has been up to, and I'm going to bring Scripture alongside of it, and that will be called a sermonet. And what I want to talk to you about is worship. First thing and foremost, I want to talk about worship. What can we expect? So, the first thing I want to say is that for the rest of the year, we're going to do one service. Part of the work that we are going to be called to do, or we are called to do, is to knit ourselves back into a community that has deepened relationships and that... so that we can get practiced again in spending time together without being afraid of each other, afraid of getting each other sick, spend time listening and reconnecting, both as individuals, but also as a community. We are an organism called the Body of Christ, and this body needs to be tended to. The source of that tending, one of the purposes that God has for worship is not dissimilar from the yoga mat. People talk about time on the mat, where they are actually practicing, simple things like breathing or moving. For us, this is time on the mat. Everything we do instructs us how it is to be fully human, loving each other, forgiving each other, asking for forgiveness, listening to Scripture, speaking about Scripture, reasoning things out. All of these are central, and one of the things we'll do is we'll do a couple of instructed Eucharists in which we step back from the actual process of worship and we reflect on, "Why do we do the things we do?" Also related to worship is the choir and music in worship. A team of folks that began before I became... before I came here, and I'm going to be very hesitant to start naming names because I don't even know who was all involved, but there was a restoration process for the organ. That process is very nearly completed. I talked to Jim Stetna yesterday. I said, "I want a date when we are going to have the organ played at Sunday worship." And the date that we agreed to is August 29th. So, on August 29th, you can expect to hear that beautiful organ played again. Music and worship and the choir. In the same way that we are going to have to learn again how to be a people who come together and function well, our choir has not sung together for 18 months. I don't know how many folks are going to return to the choir. I also don't know how many folks who haven't sung in the choir before are going to say, "I want to start singing in the choir." We also don't know of those who used to sing in the choir that may want to come back, but there's a lot that is unknown. And one of the reasons that we need a strong choir is not only for us here, but because we're doing this streaming work, we want to make sure that the sounds that we're making are as edifying to those who are homebound or away or who are tuning in for the first time, to make sure that the sound and the music is as edifying for them as it is for us. And that's going to take some work. And so, one of the sort of chicken-and-egg processes that we've been going through is we don't have an organ that works, and yet we're in the search process to hire an organist, music director. I want to talk a little bit about that right now. A position description for music director and organist has been finalized. It was supposed to go out yesterday to former organist, music directors of your parish to get their comments on it, and also to get some other comments from folks who may be interested in the position, to get some comments back from them. I can imagine the following. A given month, first Sunday, we have a choir with organ music. Second Sunday, we have the organ doing a prelude and a postlude and perhaps a communion and having in piped-in music as we've been doing. Rob Entrikin has been doing an amazing job of sourcing and working with us to put together beautiful music. It's not live. It is edifying. He's been creative in that. And yeah, big hand for Rob Entrikin. So, one Sunday full choir, organ. During the next two-week period, the organist and the music director and the choir are practicing, strengthening their work together, strengthening their capability. Next week, we would then, as I said, we'd do some organ with piped-in music, back to choir, some organ with piped-in music, giving us some time to rebuild the choir. One of the things we don't know, one of the unknowns is, do we have sufficiently strong section leaders? Now, I don't know if we've ever had to hire someone to lead a section, but I got to tell you, if that's what it takes for us to strengthen the voice and the body of our choir, that's what we're going to do. We're going to be creative and figure out how to reformulate the choir and make that a priority for the parish. This is part of your DNA. This is part of the work that Diane Perman has done, and if so many of you have done, about having music be a huge source of charism coming out of this parish. We're not going to be ready for baked bread yet. I'm looking at Laura. We're just not quite there yet. I think we're going to... I've had a number of folks talking about changing the time of worship, so I think you should anticipate it being 9:30 or 10 o'clock. Please give me... Please give me your feedback on that. Now, I want to talk about kids. No one has been, well, I'm going to say it, no one has been more adversely impacted by this COVID quarantine than children. If you think about it, if you're three years old, half your life has been spent in this condition. Huge, important developmental period. We have a youth group. It's called the preschool. We are responsible for their formation as good human beings in the context of the preschool. One of the commitments that the vestry and made with me and I made with them is that a priority would be that we would strengthen the relationship between the community of faith here and that preschool, because we have all kinds of gifts to share with those kids, and they have tremendous gifts to share with us. We're advertising for a children and families director. We're opening to the possibility that, gee, could they do something with the preschool? If they had the gifts, I would certainly bring them to Alicia and say, "Wow, this person might be able to be a teacher helper. This person might be able to be..." Again, strengthening these relationships. In the meantime, I've been calling all of the parents in the past two weeks, and I've not gotten to them all, and said, "When I was a kid and I was Roman Catholic, my first communion happened on a card table in my parents' cabin with 50 people who came to our house to worship and so I could receive my first communion." I've said to them, "I want to come to your house. I want to do Holy Eucharist with you and your family. I want to talk about what it is this is. I want those kids, when they come back, to get ready to put on white outfits and get their little tails right up here. And if we need a chair so they can stand and look to see what's happening, we're going to get a chair for them." This is so important. Daily prayer. Now, I'll go back to being a good... Daily prayer. It has been huge. It has been a huge source of connectivity for the folks who've been participating in morning and evening prayer, in complin. This whole streaming thing's not for everybody, but it has been a huge source of connectivity. Those numbers are dropping, as you would expect, because we're able to connect more. I'm going to get together with all of those who've been participating in the daily offices and talk about how it is that we want to go forward so that we're doing it in a way that, again, strengthens our connectivity, but also doesn't place an unnecessary burden on folks who are having to lead it. I'm now going to take questions. Any questions that you have on things that I didn't touch? See, my wife, of course, has to ask the first one. Go ahead.
I don't hear all of this, however.
Oh, good.
No, the question... I'm fascinated. The question about the school, this is something you did touch on, and the parents. So, I know that many of them are not church people.
Yep.
So, I'm... Which is... I'm fascinated. So, when you're calling them and saying, "I want to come to the Eucharist..."
Oh, forgive me. That's not preschool parents.
Oh, what parents?
I'm not doing that with preschool parents. Many of them have church commitments already. Some of them are not Christian and are quite just doing great in God's eyes. This is about the parents that we have here.
Got it, got it, got it.
Yeah. My hope is that neighbors will come and see what's going on in the backyard and that others will be interested in that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I was just fascinated.
No, thank you for clarifying that.
Someone else.
You know, and Alicia, I mean, there's no reason why if we... Well, I have to think about that.
No, I know, because I think it's great that they're here. But there's... I know they're Generation Two that might be very... Like, or they have their own, so I'm not suggesting...
Yeah.
I just didn't know. I thought you were going to call up those folks, and I thought, "I'd love to hear those people."
Yeah. All righty. Thank you, Susan. Are there other questions? Please, Dana.
I heard that we might be having a baptism.
We are. October 17th, this little child who came last week, Ellie. It's the Cochran family, and they've just joined the church. And they looked at you and said, "Okay, we're willing to give you responsibility for the care and formation of my child as a Christian." I said, "Good choice." So, that will happen on October 17th. They have family coming in from out of town. Otherwise, we would have done it on more of a high holiday.
Okay, so, one last thing about the kids, and the kids that are currently part of our parish.
Yep.
So, you're talking about involving them more versus having them lead.
Yeah, I am.
I mean, I like that, of course, because I like chaos.
But I also think... But I also think that for some, that won't be appropriate. I also want to rely on the good judgment of the person who's coming in, and will have the benefit of a lot of good thinking if we're able to interview good folk.
Right, got it. Okay. I think that's all I've got right now. Sorry.
Good. No, no, thank you, Susan. I want to just think if there's anything else. One of the other parts of this is depending on how... These would be Saturday evening masses in people's backyards. If that all of a sudden generates some energy and interest, I could very well envision us doing a messy church on a Saturday night, inviting families. We'd have a Eucharist together, and then we'd share dinner together to, again, strengthen those relationships. Okay. Please, Laura.
Could you take a question this time about the common cup?
Yes.
I was just curious about the directions that you sent out last night.
Yep.
Because it didn't make sense to me why it's not safe to dip the bread with your fingers. Your fingers might touch the wine.
Yep.
But it's safer to drink from the cup, but it's guaranteed that your mouth will touch the wine.
So, just two things. One, the NIH actually did a study of this, and John, Ken and John can talk a bit about why that is, because it is counterintuitive.
Yeah. Intention is a practice that was designed to keep the common...
John, would you do me a favor? Why don't you come on up here so folks can hear you?
Before I get to take some questions. Intention is a practice that was settled upon to keep the common cup without keeping the common cup. I mean, the idea of dipping the bread in the wine. It became popular in the Episcopal Church in more evangelical parishes, particularly in the South. So, you might be able to have an idea why certain people in the South might want to participate in drinking from the same vessel. And so, it's continued to be part of the life of the Episcopal Church. My first two bishops, Bishop Benison in Western Michigan and Bishop Cochran here in the Diocese of Olympia, both made it clear to the clergy and laypeople that it was not a practice that wanted... That he wanted... That they wanted continued. And since bishops have the right to say what's going to happen in the worship service, both of them said, "I just want you to know, this is really not something we need to do." What happened was during the period of time when there was prayer book revision, when there was Vatican II, everybody was studying the Eucharist, and the question kept coming up about, "What about the common cup?" Because during the plagues, the Roman Catholic Church solved the problem of not having a common cup by people only receiving in one kind. The priest received the bread and the wine, and if they're part of the altar party sometimes, but the laypeople received just the bread. So, this NIH study was undertaken along with other people that do research, because there's always PhD candidates that read some kind of novel thing to write a PhD thesis about. And what they discovered was that the fact that most communion wine is a dessert wine, which means it has a higher percentage of alcohol than a normal table wine. Second of all, the practice of wiping the lip of the vessel with a cloth, most of them linen cloths, actually works. So, those two things mean that the way that the cup is used doesn't transmit viruses, doesn't transmit bacteria. What they did find out was that what transmits viruses... that what transmits viruses and bacteria is sticking your fingers in the cup. And it doesn't matter whether you actually touch the wine or not. What happens is you've been handling that piece of bread for a while before you stick it in the cup. So in terms of public health, the practice to be avoided is intension. And I'm just going to share my observation of last Sunday is that the majority of people here intincted, and I have never seen that happen before. And my response to that was, "If you're going to continue to do this, I'm going to continue to receive in one kind." You know, I went to my primary care physician, and I said, "You know, what are the silly things I'm doing, like wiping down my house when I'm the only one that lives there? You know, but it makes me feel better." And he said, "Well, wear a mask and wash your hands all the time, like we've been doing. Continue to do that." So that's, these things here are, next to aerosols, the greatest spreading device known to humanity. So the less you use it in this kind of situation, the healthier we're all going to be. Does that make sense?
And as a reminder, the Eucharist that is received at home by that prayer is as valid as the Eucharist we receive in the bread is as valid as the Eucharist receiving the bread and wine. Emotionally and tactically, it's not as satisfying. But in terms of God's grace, you just can't keep God out of the bread.
One other thing. You know, this is a theological and spiritual point. And that is, in every description of the Holy Eucharist that we've interviewed in the Gospels, the word "drink" is used. Dunk is never used.
You have a question? I'm sorry? Oh, John just said there's also theological and historical basis that drink is always used in terms of the wine and not dunk. Very good. Thank you, John. Anything else? Any other questions? Please, Donna Rae.
It's not a question. Huge thank you. I'm one of the people who's smiling, and I would not have the church without Zoom and without all the people in the vestry, you included, that have pushed things forward. I just want to thank the vestry for not giving up on us. And so, we're...
Donna Rae just said it wasn't a question. She said, "I don't have a question. I just want you to know that I..." Do you live some part away?
We live 40 minutes.
40 minutes away, and it's been a huge help for her to connect. And she just gives a huge thank you to the vestry for that good work. And she said something nice about me, too, which I kind of like. Thank you, Donna Rae. All righty, okay. Let us pray. Holy and gracious God, give us the grace to set aside everything we think we know about you, about your grace, about ourselves, about the world. Open our hearts and our minds and our hearts and our eyes to see you afresh as you always reveal yourself. Amen. I want to tell you a little bit about what the vestry's been doing and how that matters. From 2008 to 2013, this parish lost half of its members. It used to be up at 700. Boom. From that time now, we're about 200, over 200. And the evidence is in that church is not making sense for folks, a lot of folks. Now, I want you to imagine a graph. I want you to imagine a graph that goes like this. This is time, and this is number. Okay? Do you know what that is? Those are payphones. Early on, only payphones. Even more payphones. Cell phones were invented. Ooh, now you can't find a payphone. People are not making less phone calls. People of God, people are not making fewer phone calls. The opposite has happened. This is part of what we are experiencing. There is a deep, deep hunger for meaning, a deep, deep hunger for community. We see it in all the acting out that we're seeing, that we see in our politics, the lack of civility. It is my conviction that God has deep, deep longings and desires for this community of St. John's. Okay? That your being here wasn't your idea. Me coming here wasn't my idea. God has deep, deep longings, and we can connect with God's deep longings by connecting with our own deep longings for good. Part of our becoming knit back together is to be able to hear and connect with each other's deepest longings for good so that we can discern what God's deepest longings for good are for us. Our aim is to become the indispensable, irresistible church for the city of Kirkland. People will look and say, "Oh, wow, you're from St. John's. You guys do that community dinner, right? Or you do X, Y, or Z? Or you do X, Y, and Z?" We read today in the Gospel, Jesus is not in the temple preaching. He is out in the street with hungry people who are saying, "I'd like some bread, please." Last night, we had over... Well, we had over 100 people drive through and get sandwiches. We ran out of sandwiches. They got cards from Subway. We fed people. That's a visible sign of the deep longings of this parish aligned and matched and strengthened with the deep longings of God for people to love each other. The point is not sandwiches. The point is offering gifts and looking at people not with pity or disdain or judgment, but to essentially say, "The Body of Christ, the bread of heaven." It's all we got. There's a huge need out in that community. The work that the vestry has been doing... You get older and your mouth dries out. What's with that? The work that the vestry is doing with Bishop Brian Pryor is, I think we've had five or six retreats on a Saturday. The vestry gets together. We meet with Bishop Pryor. He teaches us about what it means to be a church that rather than inflicting itself on people, "We know what's best for you," to be a church that knows how to listen and respond without any preconceived notions. The first step in that work is identity. Who are we? What are the gifts that we have? What are the gifts that we're willing to share? What are the gifts that we've been withholding? Why have we been withholding gifts? Getting to know what our skills are, what our gifts are, that's the work that we're going to be doing this fall. We're going to be doing it in conversation. We're going to be doing it by hosting a gifts retreat, spiritual gifts retreat. A survey is going to be coming out, asking you all kinds of questions about what matters to you, what is ultimately important to you, so that we can gather that information, we can become more knit together, we can be the functioning body of Christ out in the world. These guys have been training so that they can train all of us. The next step is to get out in the neighborhood. At Paul Jensen's mom's funeral, I was reminded of a story. Elsa Jensen was walking down the street. Paul was driving. Were you driving? You were driving. She had her hands full of groceries. And as Paul approached, and, you know, Paul's going to forgive me if I botch this, but a school bus rode by and stopped, and the school bus driver said, "Hey, Elsa." They chatted for a few minutes, and he drove off. I experienced that here when you all put up the Say Their Names memorial for all those African-Americans who've been killed by racial injustice. Buses would come by and honk. Did anyone else hear that, experience that? Diane, you experienced that? Yeah. Buses go by, they honk. They noticed, "Oh, you guys are up to something good." That's who we are, a body of people who have deep longings, who are not deadening those longings with addiction or amusements or whatever else, or fear or worry. And then we look at, "How can we sustain that?" And you just heard about the resources that we have, the generosity of the people here. You all have lost all of this population, and yet your giving has maintained all through that out. That is a people of God, a faithful people who know what it is to love each other and to put that love in action. When I came to Epiphany, it's the only experience I have,